I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, letter C is our new or re-elected board members. Kristen, Dr. Bardo, and Abby, if you'll come up to the front, please. Deanna is going to publicly swear our three board members who were elected in April in tonight. Dr. Bardo's returning, Kristen is returning, and Abby is our newest board member that was elected in April.
Okay, please raise your right hand, I'll read the oath of office, and once I finish, please answer. I have been elected to the School Board of Education for the United School, Unified School District of Anago. I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
All right, let's give all of these a hand for returning, and then Abby joining the board. All right, roll call, please.
Catherine Solan.
Here.
Angie, I'm sorry, Abby Maddock.
Here.
Dr. Bardo.
Here.
Bobby Braun.
Here.
Jill Maddock Nelson.
Here.
Kristen Matt Miller.
Here.
Scott Peterson.
Here.
J.D. Schrader. Danny Pyatt.
Here.
Okay, item two is citizens and delegations. Letter A is student representative. Gracie.
Hello and good evening. So, so far in the Anago School, we had a mental health week, which was last week, and there was dress-up days, which was pretty fun for the school. In our sporting events, we have ten seniors on our baseball team this year, and that hasn't happened in a long time. They are Colton Tomei, Preston Knappkavage, Kaden Novak, Jack Elke, Luke Bastel, which is why he's not here tonight, Gordon Luck, Grant Preslawitz, Eli Robrick, Gunnar Roth, and Aiden Parker. And then a few words from Coach Bastel. This senior class is a standout group. They regularly think the umpires hold the door for others during away games and crush it in the classroom with a 3.5 team GPA. They're heading into fields like healthcare, the trades, and business, and they stole the show at Wednesday's award ceremony. On behalf of the team, we want to thank the school members and everyone here tonight for your continued support of athletics. Baseball is about how you handle adversity, just like education. As Hank Aaron said, "Failure is part of success." From Sandy, "Robrick softball has a seven-game win streak heading into the final stretch of the season. Last week, we beat Mozeny at home. Mozeny hadn't lost in the conference, and we ranked number two in Division Two in the state's coaches poll. Regionals start Thursday, May 22nd." And then that's it for sports. For senior events, we have the Senior Campout in the Anago High School parking lot this Wednesday. There's a senior lock-in at North Star from 9:00 PM to 1:00 AM or later after graduation on Sunday. Our senior walk-through is going to be held this Thursday. We're going to walk through the elementary schools, middle school, and the high schools, starting at 7:45 with a picture with the fire truck. After the walk, the seniors will walk through a graduation practice and then have a thank-you signing session for our scholarships. And then graduation is Sunday, May 25th, and the ceremony starts at 2:00 PM. During the last senior class meeting, the Anago Police Department did a presentation to the senior class on distracted driving. They also faced several reminders to stay safe this graduation and summer season. Scholarship night, the senior class had been awarded over 400,000 in scholarships and grants. There was a wonderful presentation during scholarship night with several community members presenting scholarships. For the National Honor Society, they had their ceremony welcoming their new members on May 4th with a dessert bar. They welcomed eight new members, and Greta Stowe is the newest member. And the president. And then the FFA banquet was held on Sunday, May 18th. Five state degrees were given to four seniors and one junior. Four seniors received their FFA cords. Discovery and Greenhand awards were given out, and the honorary FFA member, Mr. Coor, was announced today during our assembly. And then the new FFA leaders were announced, and then that's it.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Gracie? I do want to mention to the board, if you are planning to be here Sunday for graduation, please let the administration know so your spot can be reserved on the platform for handing out the diplomas. Okay? Gracie, thank you very much for that report. Great job. Letter B, video presentation, students speaking about Zello Learning. If you'll turn your attention, board members, if you want to move out, you can, or watch the screen.
This is the computer programming for middle school to explore our academic and career choices that our students use. Answers the question as far as what you might be when you grow up, which is a very big question for all of us. There's a better time to certainly be taught than in middle school, and it's perfect because it helps students explore their interests, abilities, their career options that are out there. Kind of our hot careers are something that students can focus on, and then also helps them plan the courses that they would like to take and explore. And then, just to put it over you, it marks how Zello helps us. It helps us with our self-knowledge, explore our options, plan, and learn and often be reassessing our options that are out there. And to find Elise, Kayla was here today, and Elise is going to start us on. They share a little bit about what she's learned about herself through the Zello program. And then these careers are from our Batchmaker Program, and it's an assessment that students, small students, complete here at the middle school through Zello, and gives them just a wide variety of options. And we'll see Kayla's share a few minutes as well. And then here you can see Elise's saved careers, and she has lots that have caught her interest. Elise, are there any specific ones on here that kind of jump out?
Probably dentists, because it looks like her dentist is a really funny job. Interior designer, I feel, particularly, because just to kind of decorate things. A, a well, a few of these, because I do love welding projects for my age.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing.
Kayla, my personality style is being persuasive, organizer, and creator. And my learning style is visual and auditory learning.
So you like to learn by seeing things and also hearing them. It's a little bit different than Elise who likes to be hands-on. Awesome.
And my top career matches are lies with law, public safety, corrections and security, business management, and back initiation, like a title examiner, a legal secretary, which involves some of those post-matches.
Awesome. So Zello also helps us learn how our career clusters.
Oh, that's fine. Make your questions online for making financial and other business-related calculations, and how we learn about how business and other organizations work. And I just like being aware of how color, shapes, patterns are used in designs, and I just like learning those signs and rivers and sculptures.
Again, probably, Elise, you probably would like color, shapes, and designs as far as with being an interior designer of that interest. So just give students the ability to show what they have in common and differences as well. And then Kayla, your saved career.
Mine mostly deal with money, because I love working money and papers. And I also go to dentists and advertise honestly, because I like going to dentists because they're nice and kind.
Awesome. Well, I'd like to thank both of you for sharing your specific portfolio information that's created in Zello. And again, I would just like to share that Zello is the program that we're currently using here at the middle school and through all of the high school for all of our students to explore careers more and to support and use more of themselves.
All right. Ms. Moore, would you be sure to thank Ms. Durline for that presentation? And those kids, they did a great job. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to letter C, we have some people that we would like to recognize tonight.
Okay, up first, we would like to recognize Ms. Amanda Moore, Ms. Angie Schreiber, and Ms. Alicia Resch for the work that they presented for the sextortion presentation for our community and our middle school and high school. They worked to gather donations from the community to make sure that for the community presentation, we had food, we had babysitting available so that all of our community members had the opportunity to come in and learn more around sextortion. And the National Honor Students also came in and helped work. We had Jordan May from, his father John, from Marquette, Michigan, come and did a lot of presenting. He is, for those of you that are unaware, his son was a victim of sextortion and took his own life. And it was very moving and very, very informational and educational to our community, and I really hope for those people that weren't able to join us that night that people took time to watch the video on Facebook to learn more about it. There just isn't enough that we can do to keep our children safe. So I would like to recognize the three of these ladies for their hard work and dedication to making sure that this happened. So Alicia, Amanda, and Angie Schreiber, please come forward.
I just want to, on this, I can say a couple of words. I just wanted to tell everybody that the, simply that the schools were really, really well. The middle school was really engaging. The high school, what I was told was that you could hear a pin drop. And it's, well, that's probably what never happens. And then also, it's important to know that we had about forty to fifty kids come up to our professional speakers afterwards and talk about their experiences with sextortion here. So it's important to realize that this can and does happen here. And so the community and parents need to recognize that. Now, now you can think that it's never going to happen to my kid. It's never going to happen here. It is. It's here, and I think that information really, really got to the kids, so Amanda, do you want?
Yeah, I just to reiterate the importance. And in total, we were able to have just over a thousand students hear the speaking from John May, as well as the gal from Fierce Freedom. And interestingly enough, I, the following day, had a student, no more than two hours after school got out that day, she had started receiving some Snapchat things that were not real. And she was able to identify that, so I was really proud of her. And she came to talk to me on like how to do, how to move forward, and we were able to work through that, so. Great, I mean, if we can just change one life, I'm grateful for it, so. Thank you for the good talk, very welcome.
Okay, and up next, we would like to recognize three educators at the high school for the incredible way they stepped up during recent staffing changes. Each of these staff took on an additional grading, planning, and course responsibility, and they did so with a positive attitude and a deep commitment to supporting our students. What stands out most is their unwavering team-first mindset. They didn't just fill in the gaps, they leaned in with care, collaboration, and professionalism. They consistently put students at the center of their work, ensuring learning continued smoothly and that every student felt supported, even during times of transition. Their dedication, flexibility, and willingness to go above and beyond are what make this team so special. Thank you for modeling what it means to be student-centered, solution-oriented, and deeply committed to our school community. Please come forward, Mr. Mike Wanniger, Mr. Dennis Dukach, and Mr. Mike Blood. Got to have a picture. Okay. Up next, we have a student we would like to recognize, Brian Kazarek. Brian began playing the trumpet seven years ago and enjoyed participating in the Anago High School Marching Band. In 2022, he took part in the Rose Bowl Parade in Pasadena, California, with the historic Northwoods Marching Band. Since 2020, Brian has also played with the Anago Community Band, performing on the trumpet, French horn, and most recently, the tuba. With the help and encouragement of Ms. Molina, Brian was invited to attend the UW Whitewater Band Camp in 2022. It was during this camp that he decided to try the French horn and fell in love with the instrument. He auditioned for WSMA High School Honors Orchestra in '24 and '25 and was selected for both years. Additionally, in February, Brian earned the highest rating for his solo ensemble, which advanced him to the state level in May for his performance on the horn. At the end of April, Brian attended the Horn Fest at UW Stevens Point, where he performed with an ensemble and a masterclass for all attendees. Congratulations on your performance and being selected to perform with this high honor in the Horn Fest. Brian, would you please come forward and get your picture made?
Okay, letter D is public comment. And before we have our public comment, I just want to remind everybody that public comment shall be permitted before the board takes official action on any issue of substance. Attendees must register their intention to comment in the public portion of the meeting upon their arrival at the meeting. Comments made by the public shall be civil in content and tone, affirming the decorum established for a school board meeting by the school board. Disparaging comments or remarks about school board members, employees, students, positions, position titles, and/or district citizens should not be made permitted. Comments by the public shall be in reference to a specific agenda item. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and will be requested to preface their comment by an announcement of their name and group affiliation if and when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to five minutes' duration. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Participants shall address only topics within legitimate jurisdiction of the board. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Request an individual to leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum. Request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly person when that person's conduct interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting. Call for a recess or an adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting as to warrant such action. Portion of the meeting during which the comment of the public is invited shall be limited to sixty minutes unless extended by vote of the board. Reminder to the board members and the speakers, this is not a conversation between the board and the person speaking at the microphone. The person at the microphone will be allotted their five minutes to speak, and we move to the next person who has signed up to speak. And we have one person that has signed up to speak tonight, and I want this person to forgive me if I mess up her last name. I've been practicing. Nicole Kubiatik. Thank you to the board members that helped me. Dustin, that microphone is on? Okay.
All right. Can I start?
Yes.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Nicole Kubiatik. I'm a 1999 graduate of Anago High School. My daughter Chelsea Kubiatik is in the 12th grade and will be graduating on Sunday. I also have a son, Alex, in the 7th grade at the middle school. Professionally, I'm a senior IT project manager at Covantage Credit Union. I also serve as the president of the Anago Youth Bowling Club and treasurer of the Anago Optimist Club. I've always been grateful for the mentorship guidance given to me by past teachers, going back to my days in Lilly Elementary to high school under the guidance of my first computer and business mentor, Sharon Zamuda. I believe that having influential teachers who take the time to listen, connect, and guide students is one of the greatest impacts a person can make in the world. It helped me along the way to a career that I truly love. I wouldn't be here or where I am today professionally without the teachers that took the time for me. As a project manager, it's important to value the members of the team you work with. Without every single member of the player playing their important role, a project is likely doomed. It is important for each of these members to be recognized for the valuable part that they play on the project team. I'm here today because I would like to recognize an individual who has played a tremendous, tremendous role in my daughter's high school career, as well as many of the students who are seated behind me right now, Mr. Mike Prezek. When my daughter first came to high school in the 8th grade, she completed tech rotation. I still remember her coming home from school and telling me she welded that day and how excited she was. Honestly, I brushed it off. I didn't think much of it. Over the course of the next five years, the impact of that one teacher, Mike Prezek, has changed the course of my daughter's life forever, along with countless other students, who are many of standing behind me, and their parents and community members. In honor of this incredible role model, Mike Prezek. Mike is the instructor of the high school metals program and red-robin machining. He has taught hundreds, maybe thousands, of students on skills that are much needed by manufacturing companies in Langley County and everywhere. Mike is actively involved in the Career and Technological Education CTE Open House, which highlights opportunities available to the school's CTE offerings. For, for those who attend the CTE Open House the last two years, you've met my daughter Chelsea, working in the metals shop either on the CNC machine or welding, along with many other students who took their time out of school hours to come in and share the talents they have learned in Mike's classes. Mike is also actively involved in Skills USA, having been presented with a distinguished service award this year. Skills USA's mission is to empower its members to become world-class leaders, workers, and responsible citizens by focusing on personal, workplace, and technical skills. Mike is the advisor of Anago Skills USA Chapter. Students prepare for the competitions showcasing their skills in areas like welding, culinary arts, and CPR, first aid. Mike has spent a significant amount of his time preparing students for these competitions after school, mentoring them, and assisting in transportation. When my daughter went to her first skills competition in the 9th grade, she took last place. She was heartbroken. But through encouragement from Mike, she continued to compete at events over the next three years. Her junior year, she placed second, and senior year in the top five at state competition. This was a huge accomplishment for her. I can honestly say Chelsea never would have taken that step and explored outside of her comfort zone had it not been for the guidance of Mike Prezek. With dedication to students and community here, Mike Prezek worked with leaders at North Central Technical College to offer a welding academy program. This opportunity allowed juniors and seniors to attend classes at NTC in Anago, earning college credits in the welding trade. This past Saturday, eight AHS students, including my daughter and Carter Wasson, who's also in the room, received welding technical diplomas from NTC before even graduating high school. Had it not been for the guidance and mentorship that Mike Prezek offered to my daughter and these students, I can honestly say they would not have discovered their love for welding. Recently, I heard what I'm hoping is an untruthful rumor, that red-robin machining program and metals classes at Anago High School under the direction of Mike are being eliminated. These programs at the high school under the leadership of Mike Prezek have positively impacted the lives of countless students, and many of whom have gone on to successful trade careers right here in our community. Some are standing behind me. I'm hopeful these opportunities will be available to my son when he comes to the high school. It is important, and it is my hope today in talking with you, should the topic of eliminating high school medals be valid, that the school board administration remember the words I've spoken to you tonight, the words of a parent that knows the importance of valuing those around us and recognizing significance in building the future of our community through supporting and developing our youth. Mike Prezek is a dedicated educator and leader in career and technical education at Anago High School. Through his commitment to education, the students, and community engagement, Mike Prezek has made and continues to make a significant impact to student lives, preparing them for successful careers in skilled trades and technical fields. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Item number three, consent agenda. Approval of agenda minutes and financial reports, request for overnight travel, report of district retirements and resignations, and report of district new hires. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the agenda minutes from the April 21st, 2025 Board of Education meeting, May committee meeting minutes, district retirement and resignation report, report of district new hires, financial reports for April and May 2025, consideration of current bills, checks numbers 8863 through 8932 in the amount of $61,021.55. ACH's numbers 242501353 through 242501484 in the amount of $788,521.86. And wire transfers number 202400191 through 202400212 in the amount of $18,927.99 for a total of $868,471.40.
Motion has been made by Bobby. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I do not.
Okay. Would anyone like to have discussion? Dr. Bardo?
Deanna, I need to abstain on checks 242501423 and 242501460.
Should capture those numbers?
Can you repeat the first one?
1423.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Jill?
Yes, I would just like to recognize and thank the retirements that accumulate a total of thirty-seven years between the two members that are retiring. And I will also point out one of those with significant numbers of years of service is in the custo- in the custodial staff, and I think that we under-recognize all of the work that they do, so I want to pay special attention on that staff member and express my appreciation on behalf of the board for our retirees and their dedication to our district.
Thank you very much, Jill. Any other discussion? Kristin?
Yes, I need to abstain from check 8904 and ACH 242501435. And then I also just wanted to point out the number of applicants we had for our teacher positions. I don't recall seeing those kinds of numbers any at all recently, so Anigo's getting to be the place to be, so that's great to see.
Any other discussion or comments of the motion on the floor? It has been brought to my attention that we would like to move from number five, number six, item number six, letter A, the naming of the new elementary school. We would like to move that from 6A to have that right after the reorganization of the board. Is there any objections to moving item 6A to the, right after the reorganization of the board? Okay, hearing no objections. Deanna, can you make that move? And don't let me forget it. Any other questions or discussion of the motion on the floor? Hearing none, the voting device is now open. JD has not joined us virtually, has he? Dustin?
Bobby's isn't working.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, no, it's working.
Okay. You got us with, you got to hit this in between everyone.
No.
No.
Okay. Would anyone like to change their vote? All right, the vote is now closed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, the reorganization of the board. As we are jumping into the reorganization of the board, I want to bring a couple of things to your attention that was at your seat when you came in tonight. First of all, this information is what Mrs. Oginski, Deanna, and I spent the day with Abby this past Wednesday, and she has had all this information given to her Wednesday, but I assured her that this would be in your hands for all the board members again yet tonight. Some of you have seen all of this, in fact, all of you have seen all this before, so I'm not going to take the time to go through this word by word, but this is just a refresher of Robert's Rules of Order, how Robert's Rules works and the procedures thereof. The second document is how to obtain the floor when there's a motion on the floor, and how to have discussion through Robert's Rules of obtaining the floor. The next document that you'll see is the language when receiving a vote during a board meeting. That tells all of us how the chair will speak and direct everybody to vote at particular times. And then the last document that you will see is the document that I hold underneath my laptop and bring it out occasionally whenever there's questions of parliamentary procedures. It's a cheat sheet that you can have, so you can know that I'm not hiding anything under my laptop. It is the same sheet, cheat sheet for parliamentary procedure, and it involves the thirteen ranking motions. So if any of you have questions about Robert's Rules of Order, you can talk to me and we'll talk about it later at another time, but most of you have heard the discussion of Robert's Rules, and Abby heard a very detailed discussion of Robert's Rules this past Wednesday. Having said that, we will move to item number, letter A, nomination and election of the clerk pro temp. At this time, I will open up the floor for nominations of clerk pro temp. Would anybody like to nominate somebody to be the clerk pro temp?
I nominate Deanna Shannon as clerk pro temp of the Unified School District of Anigo Board of Education.
We have one nomination for Deanna Shannon for clerk pro temp. Is there another nomination? Third time, is there another nomination for clerk pro temp? Nominations are closed for clerk pro temp. At this time, since we only had one nomination, I will ask all in favor of Deanna Shannon becoming the clerk pro temp, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, let it be known by saying no. Then it's carried. Deanna, you are the clerk pro temp. At this time, I will open up the floor for nominations and election of a chair pro temp. Nominations.
I nominate Glenda Oginski to chair pro temp for the Unified School District of Anigo Board of Education.
We have a nomination from Bobby for Glenda Oginski to be the chair pro temp. Is there another nomination? Third and final time, another nomination for chair pro temp. Seeing as how we have one, the nominations are closed. Seeing as how we have one nominee for the chair pro temp, all in favor of Glenda Oginski becoming the chair pro temp, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, let it be known by saying no. Mrs. Oginski?
At this time, I'm seeking nominations and election for board president. I open the floor for nominations for the board president for the Unified School District of Anigo.
I nominate Danny Pyatt.
We have one nomination on the floor for board president. Mr. Danny Pyatt, do you accept this nomination for board president?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a second nomination for board president? Do we have a third nomination for board president? Okay, hearing none. All of those in favor of electing Mr. Danny Pyatt as the board president for the Unified School District of Anigo Board of Education signify and let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor, say no. Okay, you are the president. There you go.
Thank you for your vote of confidence. I will be looking, opening the floor for nomination and election of board clerk. Nomination and election of board clerk.
I nominate Catherine Solan.
Nomination for Catherine Solan for board clerk. Catherine, would you like to accept this nomination?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Kristen Matt Miller.
Nomination for board clerk. Kristen Matt Miller, Kristen, would you accept this nomination?
I'm going to deny the nomination. Thank you.
Okay. Third and final time, any other nominations for board clerk? Okay, we had two nominations, one declining the nominee, the nomination for board clerk. Catherine, you are the only nominee for board clerk, so at this time, all those in favor of accepting Catherine Solan for board clerk, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Catherine, you are the board clerk. I will be opening up the floor for nominations and election of board vice president.
I nominate Kristen Matt Miller.
Kristen Matt Miller has received a nominee nomination for board vice president. Kristen, do you accept this nomination?
I do.
Second time, any other nominees for board vice president?
I nominate Dave Bardo.
I don't accept that anymore.
Okay.
But thank you. I've done it long enough.
Our third and final time, are there any other nominations for board vice president? We had two nominees for board vice president. Dr. Bardo declined the nomination because he's tired of it, I guess.
Tired of dealing with you, Rick.
Tired of dealing with me. So we have one nominee, Kristen Matt Miller. All those in favor of Kristen Matt Miller becoming the board vice president, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Then it's carried.
Not a sign.
Kristen, you can move to the vice president's seat.
(laughing) He's moving now.
Notice that I had all my, Bardo was serious about giving this up.[1180.83][1180.83](laughing). Okay, I will open the floor for nomination and election of board treasurer.
I nominate Jill Maddick Nelson.
Nominee for Jill Maddick Nelson for board treasurer. Jill, would you accept this position?
Yes.
Are there any other nominees for board treasurer? Third and final time, any other nominees for board treasurer? Nominations are now closed. Since we had one nominee for board treasurer, all those in favor of Jill Maddick Nelson being the board treasurer, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And it's carried. Jill, you are the board treasurer. Nomination and election of board secretary. Nomination of board secretary.
I nominate Scotty Peterson.
Scotty Peterson has been nominated as board secretary. Scott, do you accept this nominee?
I decline that.[1294.41][1294.41](laughing).
For those of you that didn't hear this conversation, Scott said, "What do I have to do?" Dr. Bardo said, "What she's doing." I decline that.[1305.23][1305.23](laughing). Are there any other?
You don't want me doing that.
Are there any other nominations for board secretary?
I'm going to nominate Deanna Shannon.
We have a nomination for Deanna Shannon. Deanna, do you accept this nomination?
I do. All right, well.
Okay. Third and final time, are there any other nominations for board secretary? All right, the nominations are now closed. We all, well, we had two, but one declined. We have Deanna Shannon. All in favor of Deanna Shannon becoming the board secretary, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Deanna, you are the board secretary. Thank you. Letter H is the appointment of a delegate and alternate delegate to the 2026 WASB Delegate Assembly. Bobby, you have, this is an appointment by the board president, so you have served and served well as the delegate. Are you interested in remaining the delegate?
Yes.
Bobby, you are the delegate for the 2026 WASB Convention that will be held in Milwaukee in January, and I will serve as the alternate delegate. Letter I, appointment of a representative for the Joint Review for Tax Increment Finance Districts, the TIF, with the city of Antigo. I'm going to ask Scott Peterson if he would serve as the representative for the TIF district with the city of Antigo.
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you, Scott. Letter J is the appointment of a representative for a three-year term with CISA IX. Last year, I appointed Scott Peterson in this position, so Scott, you are beginning your second year serving as the representative from the Unified School District of Anigo for CISA IX. Letter K, consideration of designation of official publication. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board designate the Anigo Daily Journal as the official publication of the Unified School District of Anigo.
Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Oh, thank you.
Is there any discussion of the motion on the floor? Hearing no discussion of the motion on the floor, all in favor of designating the Anigo Daily Journal as the official publication of the Unified School District of Anigo, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The Anigo Journal is our publication. Letter L, consideration of designation of official depositories. I will be looking for a motion, and in this motion, please state all of the designation of depositories.
I move the board adopt the following list of official depositories for the Unified School District of Anigo to include Banner Banks, BMO Harris Bank, Covantage Credit Union, Associated Bank, JP Morgan Chase Bank, Mid-American Administrative and Retirement Solutions, Inc., PMA Financial Network Incorporated, Wisconsin Investment Series Co. Wisconsin Local Government's Investment Pool.
Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Any discussion of the motion on the floor? I just want to say thank you to Ms. Fosbender for getting us the list of all of the various depositories that we use. All in favor of the motion on the floor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And it's carried. Letter M, consideration of designation, designation, a day, place, and time for regular board meetings. This is only board meetings. I'm looking for a motion.
I move the board to approve the third Monday of each month, 6:15 p.m. at the Anigo High School Media Tech Room as the day, place, and time for regular board meetings beginning July 1st, 2025.
Motion has been made by Bobby. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I believe it's working well.
Okay. Any questions or discussion of the motion on the floor? Hearing no questions or discussion of the motion on the floor, all in favor of remaining for the third Monday of each month beginning July 1 for our board meetings, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Then it's carried. Letter N, consideration of designation, a day, place, and time for regular committee meetings. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the following schedule for committee meeting, committee meetings beginning July 1, 2025. All committee meetings will meet on the second Monday of every month, being held in the Anigo High School's Media Tech Room, number 210-4. Times are as follows. Human Resources and Finance Committee at 4:30 p.m. Building and Grounds not to begin before 5:00 p.m. Curriculum Instruction, Pupil Services, Special Education, Technology, and Human Growth and Development Committees not to begin before 5:30 p.m., and the Policy Committee will meet as needed.
Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
The current schedule is going well, especially with the ability to not start before a certain time, but be able to start early should the prior meeting end sooner, so that has been a benefit.
Okay. You know, the questions or discussion of the motion on the floor. What I'm handing out to you now are the appointments. Dr. Bardo, there's one extra there that you can pass over to Deanna. These are the committee assignments, because per our policy, committees are appointed by the president of the board. Human Resource and Finance start time of 4:30. The chair of this committee will be Catherine Solan, followed by committee members Dr. Dave Bardo and Bobby Braun. Building and Grounds will not begin before 5:00 p.m. The chair will be Scott Peterson, followed with committee members JD Schrader and Abby Maddick. Curriculum Instruction, Pupil Services, Technology, and Human Growth and Development not to begin before 5:30 p.m. The chair will be Jill Maddick Nelson, followed by board members Kristen Matt Miller and JD Schrader. The Policy Committee will meet when directed by NOLA for policy updates, and Neola is our policy. Help me, Mrs. Oginski.
That's where we get our policies. They're all vetted through Neola's attorneys, both locally and federally.
I first said NOLA because I thought I was back in New Orleans, but it is Neola for policy updates. Each committee will review policies that pertain to their particular committee, and then they will present them to the board. The Policy Committee is chaired by Bobby Braun with members Catherine Solan and Kristen Matt Miller. As the president of the board, I serve as the ex-official chair of all committee meetings. All right. Letter O, approval of authorization of electronic.
We didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. All in favor of the day, place, time, and of the regular committee meetings, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. And we're all in favor. Thank you, Madam Vice President, for keeping me in line. Letter O, approval of authorization of electronic signatures. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I'm going to make the motion, Danny, but I'm going to add something, which I can.
It's your motion.
I move the board to authorize the use of the board officer's facsimile and/or electronic signatures as allowed by law and not prohibited by rules and regulations of the respective agency or organization when they give their permission to do so.
When the permission is granted... When the permission is granted by the officer. Okay. So we want to add when the permission is granted by the officer. Does everybody understand the motion of Dr. Bartle? What you see in front of you, and then the last statement, when the permission is granted by the officer.
The idea is that it just doesn't happen that the person that is one of our officers that normally signs, if they are unable to make it, they can give permission for Deanna to just do the signature. And there's times when that happens, and there's times when there's all kinds of signatures to be made that it needs to happen. So that's why I did it.
Any other discussion of the motion on the floor? Hearing no discussion of the motion on the floor, all in favor of, all in favor of the motion as read by Dr. Barto with adding when the permission is granted by the officer, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no? Then that motion is carried. Thank you so much for bearing with us through the reorganization of the Board for the brand-new school year. We will now go to Item 6A, naming of the new elementary school. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move, I move the Board to approve the name of the new elementary school as John H. Bradley Elementary.
Motion has been made by Scott. Would you like to speak to your motion, please?
No, I just, other than to say that I think it's well-deserved and real happy to see it happen. Thank you.
Okay. Before I open the floor up for other questions or discussion from the Board members, we are honored tonight to have members of the Bradley family with us, and I want to give any of you or all of you an opportunity to speak, or if you've elected a spokesperson, if you want everybody to speak, we will listen to what all of you have to say.
Danny, I would suggest you limit it to one.
Suggestion well-taken. Mr. Bradley, if you'll, if I say Mr. Bradley, I see four of them's got to look at me. Tom, if you would come up to the microphone, please, and speak on behalf of the Bradley family, that would be so appreciated.
Thank you. Our family is very honored by this request that was made, or your proposal. I was very excited to hear the energy of Glenda as she explained to me part of the purposes, her energy level of forming leaders in the elementary school, and by bestowing the honor on my father of naming the school after him. We are humbled, and we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
If any of you have any questions for me or anybody in the family, feel free. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bradley. So I would like Mrs. Oginski to share just a portion of the conversation that she's had with the Bradley family and the reasons, the why, behind the John H. Bradley Elementary School.
So to me, having a community member that we can connect the work of the school with our students around makes it much more personal. It gives them a better sense of ideology of what it is that person has done when you're talking about teaching young children about perseverance and determination and grit. And this will be news for some of you, but we have a plan to implement the leader in me at the elementary level where it focuses on building leadership skills within the young students, and then that will carry out through the middle school and then into the high schools. So we felt that naming the school after Mr. Bradley was very soothing, considering his history, and it just is very easy. I have 10 million things running through my head of things that we can connect around learning about Mr. Bradley and what an important community member he was during his time in Antigo. So it seemed very soothing, and I felt it was also a means of helping us. It's been no secret that we've talked about rebuilding pride within our school district and pride within our community, and I feel like that is one step. We have a lot to be proud of in our community, and it's up to us to lift that up. So I feel like this is an opportunity that we just can't pass, and I feel like it's very soothing. I just, I get a little teary-eyed of thinking about all the things that we can connect for our young learners around just the name alone of the new elementary school.
Thank you very much. Any questions or discussion of the motion on the floor? Jill?
I just want to express on behalf of the Board, and it's already been shared, thank you to each one of you, sorry, this is so touchy, for being here. It means a lot to us to have you here. It's exciting and uplifting to see your sense of pride. I can feel that energy and appreciation, so thank you for being here and taking the time, and I'm glad we could move it, this agenda item up, so you didn't have to sit through it as much, because this is really important, and we appreciate you guys being here, so thank you.
Any other Board members would like to speak to the motion on the floor?
I just want to say that I had the privileges of teaching a lot of your children and some grandchildren, and speaking of leaders, your family is it.
So to the Bradley family, I want to personally say thank you for sharing your dad to our country. It's not unnoticed. And just like Jill, it is kind of emotional to think about the service that he did for our country, as well as all the other many military men and women that served proudly, the good old US of A. And on behalf of the Board, when we have the date set for the groundbreaking of the new facility, I would like for all of your family to be there and have a shovel in hand to take the first shovel of dirt and turn it over for the John H. Bradley Elementary School for the City of Antigo. We'll let you know in plenty of time when that date is. Okay. Any other discussion? I think we're going to do a voice vote for this as well. All in favor of the moving the new name of the elementary school to be John H. Bradley Elementary School, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? And this, this is carried. Thank you so much.
Oh. I got everything.
Mr. Blood, account two.
Can we get a photo of all of you together?
You guys want to stand in here in front? Board members, if you'll stand up behind the Bradley family? Thank you.
Thank you for your move.
That's all good. We'll stand right in front of the table. Good move. It was a better idea. Thank you. We're going to take a picture, right?
Oh, in front.
I saw this person a bit off. I didn't know it was, yeah, that's right. I would never have voted it, or, no, I didn't ask.
It looked just like your mom.
I think we're going in there.
Want us up?
Board members coming from the table behind the Bradley family?
Yes, you need to be in the picture.
You guys act like we like it.
Yeah.
Take a picture. Amelia.
Go way, way back. And the portrait.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
We are very honored.
This is nice of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you.
This is nice. We're very honored. We're trying hard. Thanks.
Okay, Item 5, Administration Reports. I will turn this portion over to Mrs. Oginski.
Okay. Okay, first, we have attached the Business Services Administrative Report. Mrs. Fossbender is present, if anyone has questions. Up next, we have the Buildings and Grounds Report, Administrative Report. Mr. Leiderman is present, if anyone has questions. We have the Curriculum and Instruction Report attached. Ms. Stutzreem is present, if anyone has questions. Pupil Services and Special Education Report is attached. Ms. Wagner is present, if anyone has questions. Up next, we have the IT Report attached. Ms. Mushak is present, if anyone has questions. And last but not least, the Superintendent Report. I'll try to do a quick rundown. I've spent some time with the senior class, talking about the senior class prank, the campout. I have even volunteered to do a drive-through to ensure everybody's being safe while they're camping out in the parking lot. And I think we've narrowed down what their senior prank will be, so they're a little bit excited about that. May 13th and 15th, we held friends and families events at West and North, and I have to say, I was blown away by the attendance. We had so many families and children at both schools. It was just wonderful. And we sent home lots of books with kids to read over the summers. Families were excited, kids were excited. So I feel like that was a really good transition before we have our open house. So the kids, most of them have already visited the school that they will be attending next year, and their families know who the teachers will be in the building, so it was a great turnout. And Mr. Pyatt was present for both. Do you want to add anything to that?
I just concur with what you said. It was great to see the enthusiasm from the parents, as well as the students, that was, that was coming through the building. They were so excited, carrying home bags of books as well, and that was exciting.
Yes, absolutely. On May 14th, we spent the day with Ms. Maddick doing Board Member Orientation, and then we had an hour luncheon with the Directors, where they took time about explaining their roles and responsibilities as Directors to Ms. Maddick. I felt it was a very successful day. The next one is really important. It's an update on the new building, progress on the new building. Drawings are around 10 days out. I just talked to Mr. Romets right before the meeting tonight to get the latest update. As soon as everything is completed, they will be sent to the State for approval. The deadline is by June 2nd. At the same time, bidders will have access to the plans. We already have three bidders that have reached out to him wanting to know when the plans are going to be submitted, so they're a little bit anxious, wanting to know so that they can get the bids out, which is exciting, which means probably better pricing for us, considering there's so much topsy-turvy with pricing and everything right now, so that's very exciting. So it seems that we may have several, even more than those three, that are looking to bid on our project. And a reminder that high school graduation is the 25th at 2:00 p.m. I would love for everyone to be present. If you are planning to attend, Deanna already has it posted, please let us know so that we can make sure that you have a special seat for the graduation. This is our end goal in mind, is getting our students to reach and achieve graduation, so it's something to be memorialized and to be celebrated for our students, so I encourage all of you to try and attend, even though I do realize it's Memorial Day weekend. It'll be Sunday at 2:00 p.m. at the high school gym. We also have a retirement recognition in Vaughan Theater at 11 o'clock on the 27th for all of our retirees. I enjoy, I encourage you to attend that as well. It's a little different than what we've done in the past, so please try to join us if you can and help us celebrate the numerous years that our staff have dedicated to our school district. Any questions?
Board members, also, for graduation, if you plan to attend, if you could be in the Commons area in front of the à la carte food area by 1:00, that's whenever we will do pictures. Is that right?
1:30.
1:30, thank you.
Typically.
1:30 for pictures. Be in front of that à la food cart area. Any other questions for Mrs. Oginski?
I just want to say that I love that the campout started as the senior prank, and now it's like a yearly event. It's just so cool.
It's traditional now.
Yes, yeah.
Bobby? No. Jill?
I just, oh, you want to comment? Just wanted to say that the recognition for retirement looks, appears that it's on the same day on this, on your report. It's on the 27th, is that, that's correct?
Correct, the 27th, yes.
Okay, and then I will attend both.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Jill?
I just wanted to piggyback on the senior activities. I just had an activity that involved the class, and it was throughout the community, and it seemed to be well-received and very friendly and a great way to for students to come together and align. It was fun to watch from the outside, so kudos to the senior class, because you spoke about seniors and planning. I also want to take this opportunity, because our administration will not recognize their efforts, but we have administration that have had dual administrative roles for the majority of our school year that is not overlooked, that is not undervalued, the school year's coming to an end. But as a Board, we appreciate that individuals, administration stepped up to essentially fulfill two significant roles simultaneously, two, if not more, roles at the same time, out of necessity for the best interests of our district due to vacancies that occurred into the school year. So because you will not recognize yourselves, you just do what you need to do, because it's the right thing, I will take the opportunity to say you know who you are, and it is very much appreciated.
Here, here.
Thank you.
Yeah, here, here is right.
We also have a administrator that, again, won't stand up and sound the alarm of her outstanding achievement, but I will say her name, because she is receiving an award in January of 2026 of being the Number One Business Manager of the Year, First-Time Business Manager of the Year. So Kelly Fossbender, new business manager, new business manager of the year, Kelly Fossbender, and she's going to receive an award in January 26. Kelly has grown tremendously in that role in the time that she's been there. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
Thank you for pointing that out. I didn't know if I was going to be, like, overstepping on something, so thank you very much. Well-deserved. We are very proud of you. Thank you, Kelly.
All right. Board Action. Letter B, Consideration to Approve the 2026 European History Trip to Germany, Austria, Hungary, and Slovakia. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move to approve the 2026 European History Trip to Germany, Austria, Hungary, and Slovakia as presented.
Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, so this was brought to committee. Committee voted to bring it to the full Board. Ideally, the group is looking for 18 students to go, that would be, or 18 people to go, sorry, that'd be 12 students. Remainder would be chaperones. I want to point out that it's a collaborative effort between the German Club Choir in History. Drama. What did I say?
An AP European History, yes.
Thank you. Collaborative effort, which is really neat, because it not only helps increase the potential of interested students, but also with, like, fundraising and stuff. I just think it's a really smart collaborative approach. That's all.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions of the motion on the floor? All right, hearing no questions or discussion of the motion on the floor, your voting device is now open and available for you to vote on the measure on the floor. Would anyone like to change their vote? All right, the vote is now closed, and the motion carries. Happy trails. Letter C, Consideration to Approve the Updated Teacher Contract Language- Letter C, consideration to approve the updated teacher contract, language only. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move to approve the updated teacher contract, language only.
Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion, please?
I would defer this. I was just trying to look quickly, but my computer's not loading fast enough. I believe this was on a committee agenda, if I recall correctly.
It was on finance.
Thank you. So I looked over that agenda item. I don't have anything to share. If anybody from finance has anything in addition to add.
It was presented by Kelly and Mrs. Ojenski to the finance committee, and we passed it on to the board level.
And I think it's important to add that this will be routine work. As things change, one of the changes was language around the number of days worked, so it didn't conflict with inclement weather days. So we changed that to make sure that there was some flexibility to where if we had to work more days or even use an inclement weather day for professional development, that gave us the ability to do that.
Are there any other questions of the motion on the floor?
Yes.
Abby?
My question is, when will our teachers be receiving their contracts?
So the plan is, if everything goes through as it is, Mrs. Fossbender has everyone's salaries. We worked through that, and we have all of that ready. And these are ready to go if they're approved tonight. So they should be able to be electronically submitted to staff tomorrow.
Okay, and then I have a, can I speak again, or do I need to wait?
You can speak, continue.
In the standard teacher contract, number 10, it says, "This contract shall be null void and no effect unless it is signed and returned," which blah, 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 in five days. That's my issue, is five days. I don't understand that because the statute says that teachers have until June 15th. So I don't understand where this five days is coming from.
So we consulted with our legal counsel, and I can tell you that the changes that have been made went through committee. There were recommendations to make some changes. And once we had that motion, we went back to our attorneys and shared it with them, and they said absolutely that that we are within our purview to do this.
Okay, okay, I don't know how to...
So even though it's within state statute, we as a school district can request that.
Okay, do we think that five days is enough time? I mean, before they had a month, from May 15th to June 15th. Five days seems very short if you're, you know, thinking about your family or your life. I just, I don't know if anyone else feels that way, but I definitely do.
So they have five days to accept the contract?
Yeah.
So state statute, state statute 1118.22, letter R, number two, the portion that Abby is referring to, the statute reads, "Shall accept or reject in writing such contract not later than the following June 15." So we actually have from the time the contract is issued until what we choose, which is five days for this year, or the state statute says, "Not later than June 15." So we can go all the way to June 15. But the committee voted last Monday to put this to five days.
I guess, the way I look at it is, say you're hiring a head basketball coach. You know, you want to know right away. Because if he says no, you want to get on the horn the next day and gets, you want to get the best guy.
Correct.
So when you're competing for a top-level person, you want to know right away.
And I will...
It protects, it's in the best interest of our district to get that person to sign a contract as soon as possible.
Dr. Barto?
What also came to the committee was that in the past, you know, we get out either late May, early June, and if it was June 15, the teachers would be gone. And then administration said that there were times when June 15 came, and people who they thought were coming back hadn't signed or returned, and therefore they were making phone calls, trying to get these people, hey, get, you know, and then they're on vacation, and they're saying, yeah, I want to come back. And so we let the administrative, administration let them go longer than June 15. But the point is, if it's five days, they'll still be here, working. And that's what administration said, was that if they're here, there's a better chance of everybody having it back into us, rather than the administration trying to catch people during the summer, the early summer. So that was one of the reasons it was five.
Would anybody like to speak?
Just that I would agree, and quite frankly, the pool dissipates the longer we wait, so...
Right.
Prompt action on our part to want that signature right away. So I would agree.
Yes, I think it's more than fair to give them five, technically seven days with the weekend.
Right.
Thank you, I just wanted to hear other points of view.
Any other discussion or questions of the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing no questions or discussion of the motion on the floor, your voting device is now open to approve the updated teacher contract, language only. Would anyone like to change their vote? All right, the vote is now closed. And the motion carries. Letter D, 2526 Unified School District of Antigo Agreement for Use of the Clara R. McKenna Aquatic Center with Langley Hospital. I will be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the 2526 Unified School District of Antigo Annual Agreement for Use of the Clara R. McKenna Aquatic Center with the Langley Hospital as presented.
Motion has been made by Catherine. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Only that this came to the committee last Monday, and it's a routine agreement that comes up yearly.
Is there any other discussion or questions of the motion on the floor? Kristin?
So last year, we talked about, this is like basically our break-even point. Why do we choose not to make money?
So in the past, it was very significant in the aspect that it was extremely low, much lower than our operating. So they had quite a gigantic hike last year, and we did put a standard 5% increase this year. They have been an excellent partner. And so when we recalculate all of our, all of our operating expenses every year, this, that will be impacting all of the different things that we have. So it hasn't been done that way, but we're doing that this, in this way. And so in looking at all of the different aspects of their usage, this is a good partnership fiscally for us to have.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing no questions or discussion of the motion on the floor, your voting device is now open to approve the annual agreement from the aquatic center to the hospital. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed. And the motion carries. Letter E, consideration to approve the annual HRA contributions. I will be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the annual HRA contributions to the district's HRA plan for eligible staff in an amount not to exceed $158,000.
Motion has been made by Dr. Barto. Would you like to speak to your motion?
This was the amount that was brought forward by Mrs. Fossbender, and the committee moved it forward.
Would anyone like to speak to the motion on the floor? Kristin, go ahead.
I would just like to say that a lot of times, things are brought to our attention that we are not doing, recognizing our tenured teachers. It's not always a dollar amount. There's other things that we're doing for teachers who are here for multiple years. And this is a very good example of one of those things.
Thank you for pointing that out. Any other discussion or questions of the motion on the floor? Hearing none, the voting device is now open. Try one more time, Abby. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed. And the motion carries. Letter F, consideration to approve the instructional coach position. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move to approve the instructional coach position as presented.
Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion, please?
No.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion of the motion on the floor to approve an additional instructional coach position?
So is it, am I correct that we're going to be looking for two? One from a retirement and this additional one?
Correct.
Okay, hearing no other discussion, the voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed. And the motion carries. Letter G, consideration to approve the middle school locker purchase. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move to approve the middle school locker purchase as presented.
Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
It went to committee, not my committee, but it's on our agenda, so it went through committee. And the information's in the topic summary sheet, so I don't have anything further to add.
Okay. Any further discussion or question of the motion on the floor? Mr. Leiderman is present to answer any and all questions. Hearing no questions or discussion, the voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed. And the motion carries. Consideration, letter H, to approve the sale of East Elementary. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move to approve the sale of East Elementary by choose one, A, realtor, B, sealed bids, or C, an auction.
Okay, which one of those would you like to choose for your motion?
Sealed bid, B.
Okay, the motion on the table is, I move to approve the sale of East Elementary by a sealed bid. Would you like to speak to your motion on the floor?
Only that I feel that the district doesn't need to involve a realtor necessarily, as we can save a percentage of the sale by avoiding the realtor involved, and that a attorney can file those, or draft the necessary transfer property, including a deed and the closing title work.
The motion on the floor is what we will direct all of our discussion to. Is there any discussion of the motion on the floor? The only discussion that I would add to this would be, a later date would be set for when these sealed bids would be due, once we are finished with East Elementary, and Mr. Leiderman can give direction to the committee of setting the date for the sealed bid, unless you're prepared to do so tonight. Okay.
I have one question.
Bobby, go ahead.
In the sale of prior property, there were some parameters that we stayed as far as what those buildings could be used for, or the intent...
Deed restrictions?
So I'm just wondering where the intent is as far as on the sale? If anybody can answer that?
Well, we've discussed a few things, and one would be that when the building is sold, it could not be used for a school.
Correct.
For certain. And I think that's something that would be left up to the board to discuss, of any other restrictions you would like to have placed, because I think there are other considerations.
This would be an item we would talk about at the committee for building and grounds. And at that time, when it's on the committee agenda, let that committee chairman know, if you're not on that committee, what you would like to have as far as deed restrictions. And we can talk about it at the committee, and then it'll be brought to the board for final approval. Dr. Barto?
When I was at Whitburn, we sold a building, we did it by bids. I would recommend that that committee attempt to come up with a minimum bid. And then I would also state that family members can only make one bid. That was not in our, when we went through the process, we got a better price than we expected. However, one family who got the bid had like five bids in. And then when they found out that their top bid didn't, they declined to take it. Then they declined. And then the third one was high enough that they were the high bidder and had beaten someone else for the bid. So we want to make sure that that game is not played, because we never thought of that.
Any other questions of the motion on the floor? So Jake, I'm sure that you've taken some notes down for the committee, deed restrictions, minimum bid, and then one bid per family, and I would say, or business.
Are you comfortable, is this the option that you would prefer? If you're...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Because you're going to be the one doing it, so...
If you didn't get those notes, Deanna sure got them for you.
When we did it, the board president and the superintendent were there to open the bids.
We can do that. Okay, hearing no other discussion of the motion on the floor, and that is to approve the sale of East Elementary by sealed bids. The voting device is now open.
That's good.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Okay, the vote is now closed. And the motion carries. Letter I, consideration to approve the second reading of Act 20 Policy, policy number 5411, third grade promotion and retention at-risk students. I will be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the second reading of Act 20 Policy at number 5411, third grade promotion and retention at-risk students.
Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
This is the second read, so it's already come to the full board for a first read.
And what that is stating is, if the board chooses to pass this motion tonight, this would then become adopted and become an active policy. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, no, hearing no other questions or discussion, the voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed. And the motion carries. Letter J, consideration to approve math resource purchase. I will be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the purchase of additional manipulatives for illustrative math program, grades kindergarten through fifth grade, at the amount of $13,599.56.
Motion has been made by Kristin. Would you like to speak to your motion?
When we approved the curriculum, I mentioned that this was coming, and here it is. And it was a cost savings as anticipated.
Is there any other discussion or questions of the motion on the floor? Hearing no other questions or discussion of the motion on the floor, the voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed. And the motion carries. Letter K, consideration to approve laptop purchase. I will be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the bid from Camera Corner in the amount of $33,660 for the 2025... for the 2025-26 staff laptops.
Motion has been made by Bobby. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I, not necessarily. I just assume that the laptop purchase for staff is probably in a rotation schedule, and that this went through finance committee.
Technology.
Technology.
Or technology.
Yes.
Not us.
And it is routine, and the numbers are similar, about the same.
Are there any other questions or discussion of the motion on the floor? And Kesha is available if there are questions. Okay. The hearing no questions or discussion of the motion on the floor, the voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed, and the motion carries. Letter L, consideration to approve the first reading of the Special Update Edgar Policies. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move to approve the first reading of the Special Update Edgar Policies.
Motion's been made by Dr. Barto. Would you like to speak to your motion?
It came to fi, to the finance committee. We basically grouped all nine of them together. They came to us from Niola. They were very small changes in every one of them, and it was basically dealing with federal money coming to the school district, and this is a nationwide change, which had to be done by July 1, if I remember.
Correct.
Correct.
Any other discussion or questions of the motion on the floor? While we are talking about policies, Bobby, we will need to have a policy committee meeting very soon for a Niola update. So get with Mrs. Oginski, and we'll get that set.
Sure.
Thank you. Hearing no questions or discussion of the motion on the floor, your voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed, and the motion carries. Our next board meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 16, 2025, 6:15 p.m., right here in the tech room. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by...
Catherine.
Catherine. All in favor of adjournment, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. We will see you next month.